Or you are welcome to go. So just wait for Morgan to take his place. No, don't take it. Right. So first of all, apologies for absence. It's very clear that Steve Cooper has, is not here this evening and has sent his apologies. Other than that, we are a full house. Number two, are there any declarations of interest, please? Looking at it. No declarations of interest, so that's good. Item number three, the minutes of the previous meeting. The meeting that you need to look at is the town council meeting of November the 4th, which has a second page, which is the confidential page. Have you all had a chance to look at that? Is everybody happy with it? Can we have a proposer, please? Linda. And a seconder, please? Bernie. And a show of hands, please. Thank you. Excellent. And then moving on from there, there are several committees which are really useful for those of us that aren't on all of the committees, which I don't think anyone is. So it's really good to have a copy of those, but they are for information only. But you do have a copy of them. Item number four is the finance report. And this is where it gets really interesting because it's time for Morgan to tell us about the finance.
Thank you, Chair. It's a relatively brief update for this meeting. Just to note that the bank balance was £280,443 at the end of November. And the reconciliation of the council's bank accounts to the 30th of November has been completed. There's a list of payments made during October and November, totaling £98,104, of which £5,698 was attributable to the Salisbury Gardens account. And as usual, the full list of payments are attached for members' information. Receipts during October and November totaled £28,521, of which £16,057 was in respect of Salisbury Gardens rents. And there is the usual budget monitor, which shows any significant variances from the budget year to date. We've started highlighting them in red so they're more noticeable for members. But none of them are significantly different from the October council meeting. We're not anticipating the, any overspends to be worse. And in fact, there are few underspends that could be, where the situation is improved from our previous predictions.
Okay, thank you, Morgan. I just do have one question, and I suspect some of you were, I don't know who's noticed, the water supply to the Esme toilets at just under £3,000. That's a lot of water.
Yes, indeed. The Esme toilets have always used a lot of water traditionally. But yes, the, the current level of usage indicates something wrong. And so we're looking into that. The, the issue of, of course, is like domestic properties. Any water pipes from the meter to the property are the responsibility of the property owner. And it's a run of about 50 metres from pretty much the Mill Bay to the Esme toilets here. The meter is a long way away. So if there is any issue before the actual building itself, we've got quite a task on hand to uncover it.
Could that be changed?
It would be very nice, but I, I don't imagine the Water Board would want to decrease, or sorry, would want to increase their responsibility. It would be work and ask, but yeah, suffice it to say, we're looking into that. Because it's, it's obviously unexpected to be that high.
Don't we cover the under liability insurance to investigate that?
The, in my experience, the Water Board actually have a leakage allowance. So it may well be looking, worth looking into the insurance. But they, they have been generous in the past where there have been leaks, particularly with quite old pipework.
We've got censures on those, your owners anymore, but they're doing, when they were working.
We did, yeah, yeah.
So before we started over time.
Yeah, it was, so. It should be a lot lower now, but.
They're flush, aren't they?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm really glad that you're on it, so that's. Has any, has anyone else picked out anything they would like to question on the financial report?
Yeah, I should too.
Yes, Carl?
When I joined in council with name, we spoke about transferring the council's bank account to a higher interest fund, I think that's how.
Um, no, because of changing staff and other, other events going on, we've missed out on the timings to get that higher interest account for this financial year. But I'm, I'm most of the way through an application for, for one to start in April, the second we get the precept in, so that we can maximise interest early on in the year.
Are there any more questions? Would someone like to propose, please? Steve Milford. And second, please. Linda. And a show of hands, please. Thank you. Item number five, going on again to Morgan, the financial risk assessment.
Indeed, it's a requirement that we undertake a financial risk assessment each year. This is later on in the year than is ideal, but earlier than we were last year. So we're, we're slowly falling back into the right sort of schedule. It's very much the same as, as previous years, I think with only a couple of minor amendments.
Did anyone have any questions on that? It's just that one page. Okay, so can someone please propose to accept that? James Tugard. And a seconder, please? Brayden. Had a little moment there. The next one is fairly straightforward. Item number six, bank account signatures. Morgan, I think you could explain, thank you.
Yes, indeed. Previously, it's, it's been the case that we have had three members as signatories on the bank account and two members of staff. Again, with recent staff changes, we're down to one member of staff. So it's just to recommend the appointment of Alison Killick as the second staff member as a bank account signature.
So that's fairly straightforward. If someone would like to propose. Linda. And Steve Milford, seconding. Thank you. Right. Moving on to free parking request. That is item number seven, Ashwell Road. Morgan, I believe you've been dealing with this.
Yes, indeed. So the, the request came into the office for suspension of parking charges on the 16th and 17th of December, because there's an event going on at East Dean. And they, they would obviously value the parking charges being suspended to aid with parking locally, prevent all the roads being clogged up, even though it's quite a distance to walk by note. So they've, they've included quite a lot of detail there about the benefits to it, considerations. And as it is midway, midweek during December, the cost of the council is assessed by their mandate by ourselves to be very insignificant. So yeah, members are recommended to consider that.
If I could just say that I know that they've got 20 local artists. And when you look at the parking along by the pond there, although I wouldn't want to park in Shaw Road and go to East Dean particularly. But it is quite a long way away. But I know that we may need to have some conversation about this. Would someone like to give us something to start with? Because I don't see a problem with it personally. Carl?
Yeah, on the, at the Environment and Transport Committee, I spoke about for future parking applications to have a, the matrix that we go through to identify if it's, if it's acceptable to grant free parking to a community event or a private event, or whatever that might be. But I think in the absence of a matrix at the moment, I'd say, I think this might fall into that. And I certainly support it because it's, it's a community event. We're not losing any great revenue. And it's part of bringing East Dean back to life with local talent in one space. And it would just be our small contribution to kind of helping the community. So I'm fully supportive of that.
Yes, I hope everyone has seen the advertising because they have done some quite tasteful advertising for the event. And it looks as though it is going to be a very worthwhile event, I have to say.
East Dean's very good for Bonchurch, which is important because they do a lot, close doors of Bonchurch. Keep on, it's going to get better, I hope, too. Make it more sociable, very sociable place anyway. But I think we need to support it.
So does anyone, is that the leaflet that's?
Yes.
Yes. So there is a couple of leaflets here to show the, the event, which is running over two days. But I think the fact that there is not a great loss of income.
So is it a private event then? Is it a business? Is it a charity or?
I couldn't quite make my mind up, I have to say about that. I don't know if anyone, Catherine, you have the leaflets. Did you have any clue as to?
I guess they are a business, but they are providing a really interesting event for the community.
So I, sorry.
Do you know a little more about the?
There's a little, I went on the site, I thought there was a, one of those QR codes somewhere. And it is a private event, but the proceeds are going towards restoring East Dean.
Which is, yeah, of course, it's quite a task, isn't it? Yes.
And if we give them free parking, will anybody else jump on the van, Mike?
It might be, and that's why, and that's why I said, and I said, at the moment, I think this is good. In my opinion, I think this is, it's, it's supporting East Dean. And then in the future, if we do have a, have a, have a matrix that, that.
Because you want to watch other people?
Yeah, exactly, exactly that. So it's not like a free-for-all. So and then the, the staff can literally, it will come to us to approve the matrix. And then the staff can basically make up their own minds once they've.
Once we're ready.
Once they've gone through the process.
Can I just say that I think that might be something that we can do as an annual thing? Because Catherine will confirm that we are well ahead with our full list of events for 2026. So we will be able to look at them. There are some that, like Tanya's event historically asks for it, the carnival asks for it. So we know what, we know where to expect most of them. But we can, I think we can work on next year to get a policy, shall we say, where, where, where we don't have to debate each one. Yes. Yes, yes. So can we then say, rather than saying considerate the request for free parking, can we change the recommendation? I suggest to saying that members recommend that on this occasion, we allow free parking for those two days. So anyone that's having? So can we have a proposer for that then, please? Did you get that, Harry? Is that all right?
Yep.
Okay, James Tugard. Anybody else want to second it? And Carl?
Unanimous.
Yes, is it unanimous? Can I have a show of hands? Yes, yeah.
I think it's important.
Thank you.
This issue talking about.
Thank you very much. So staying with Bonchurch, we have the parking situation at et cetera on Bonchurch Road, which I think James wants to propose for us as item number eight.
I want to apologize, I've been working with Bonchurch since the 70th February. These problems are basically, I'm asking the council to agree to write to Island Road regarding the suggestions approved in the traffic arrangement of Bonchurch, following representation from local residents, et cetera. What I propose is reverse the parking control outside Bonchurch Pond. A moment to be all year round at two, two hours a minute stay. And secondly, I'm reducing the speed limit to Bonchurch Village and Shaw Road from 30 mile an hour to 20. So basically, Island Road have come back to us, myself, and saying, well, we're going to have to contribute towards the VTC if they want to. So basically, can we write to Island Road and carry out the suggestion? Approach our, our local council, they can approach Island Road, establish a cost for the adjustments and consideration included, an amount to be added to a budget of 2017, 2018. Cover the costs of basically survey and provide us with a quotation.
So to be clear, that's all that you're asking for is to cover the cost of an assessment to see whether or not they can improve things down there.
At this stage, yeah.
I do know one thing that was rather strange. Apparently, you, unless anyone can tell me otherwise, the traffic wardens say they don't go to Bonchurch.
They don't?
No, perhaps once a year.
Never seen one in there, I don't know.
So, yeah, so at least someone else has corroborated that, that. So in other words, whatever's happening there, they're getting away with it. So maybe, you know, something does need to change there. But what we're saying is, can we get the, a price for this assessment? But I imagine, can I just ask Morgan, is it going to be really slow? Is it going to take like months and months for them to come back with this?
Unknown, I'm afraid. I'm not, I'm not too well integrated into the Island Roads way of doing things. But my understanding was that if we, as Venter Town Council, were to ask and to get a price for them to do the assessment, there's a chance that it may be higher up on the list for them to, to do. Because obviously, they get loads of requests. And they all sit there waiting for assessment in some order unknown to me. So if we provide the funding, or if we were to provide the funding for the assessment, it may speed the process up.
However, I have to say that as the amount is unknown, presumably that would then have to go to the budget for the budgetary considerations. It wouldn't, you wouldn't just say yes to any figure, would you? Yes, Ian, please.
I think that the thing missing from the process that we're discussing is any concert, formal consultation with the residents. And in my, my personal view is as a council, if we're going to propose something, we need to be happy that the residents have been consulted and happy with it. I don't think it's for us just to sit here and decide what. So I'll see if I could finish.
Ian, finish, just the same, finish, please.
I do think as a council, we should consult residents if we're going to be proposing changes to either parking or speeding arrangements. And, and the other issue I think we would need, need to think, think very carefully about is actually funding Island Roads assessments. Because it seems to be, once we start doing that, we're not going to get them to consider anything in, in their, unless we pay for the assessment, and that's a slippery slope. I'm not sure we'd want to be on.
And I don't think that whatever you do is going to stop what is happening, really. Because they just do what they want down that end, don't they? They've made up their own rules.
I'm just kidding. There's 20 cars parked on there illegally, all done from one business down there. Well, no business owners want to leave them there. Because we'd have to ask the traffic warden to go down there, to look at them. We've got to do something.
I think that the request, if I'm not wrong, has come from the Bonchurch Community Association. Is that, oh, oh, because you live in Bonchurch.
Can I just help out a process?
Yes.
Because this will probably help a lot of your decisions here. So I believe the correct way would actually be to go through the highways authority, being the Isle of Wight council. And they would then instruct Island Roads to, to do the assessment on their behalf. At that point, it would, it would trigger the start of what's called a TRO, not to include the TP, the Traffic Protection Order, so traffic regulation. And that would have a statutory consultation attached to it. And then it would, it would eventually come, and I, I say eventually because you're looking at about a two to three year wait to come to what currently is Policy Finance and Resources Committee. But by then, I highly suspect it'll be the cabinet system again, and it'll be the cabinet member overseeing that. So I think that the, the, the sort of halfway between both your suggestions is the, the correct path. Just if that helps councillors.
So, um, yes, thank you, Mark.
I, I did inquire about this myself.
Right.
And this is from Claude, I actually got.
Thank you.
It says, I can confirm that there is a request for parking restrictions and speed restrictions on the list for Bonchurch Village Road. These requests will be considered by the Isle of Wight council during the next district review.
Which we believe is next year.
They're doing per quarter of the island every six months. So it takes two years to get around. Ours was done, if you remember, when the Mill Bays tripped on lines.
Yes.
That's when our last lot was done. So I think that was just over a year ago. So we're looking for a year on from that, no, two years on from that, which would be a year's time.
Yes, so isn't we?
Entire area.
We're getting there, yes, yeah. So does it look as though there is no need to ask for permission to spend money? It looks as though we can do it without.
Yes.
But maybe, I think Ian's suggestion to get something in writing from the residents that are the ones that have been driving this is, is an excellent idea.
I, I don't think it's that that we need to do. I think if, if as a council, we're going to vote in favour of a change, even if we're just making representations, we ought to be happy as, as a representative body that the residents who live in the area are, you know, support it. And I don't think it's sufficient just to have an association, you know, which, when it comes down to it, it's probably a handful of people putting the idea forward. I think we would, as a council, we would want, we would want to know that people, you know, this is a change that people want. Otherwise, you end up in a situation where we all vote for a 20 mile an hour speed limit, and then we suddenly find that the village is up in arms because no, you know, lots of people there don't want it. And, and you could very easily get yourself into that sort of situation. And the same with the changes to parking restrictions. People get very exercised about that. And we, you know, although I'm sure the business owner won't be very pleased, we don't know whether it would affect anyone else in the village.
Well, I've been working with them since the 70th February this year. But I'm also happy to relieve the trouble.
Yeah. Yeah, I was going to say, so if we could leave it to the Bonchurch councillors, Mark and Tom Watkins and James, to sort that out, if everybody's happy with that, and to, to get more public opinion. Is that the feel?
It is. We, we do, we do that as a council, so although it's obviously the council's volunteering, make the, the work easier, it needs to be the council that approves, approves the document and gets the responses. It's not sufficient to go back to the councillors.
Okay, yes, so it's, it's Morgan and are you okay about that?
Indeed, so to, to clarify then, you're asking to do a consultation of sorts, essentially to, to gain opinion on the suggested changes there.
Yes, so that would be a change of the proposal.
Is there a best way for you to relieve this drop and ask for a meter of charge? Do you want to put a place here, which I'm popular?
Is it appropriate to move forward on that here, or does it need to go to a committee? Morgan, can you give us some guidance on that?
You can make a resolution here.
Make a resolution here. So what's everyone's feeling about how we should approach the residents then?
Well, if we go into it as a church or public setting, the only people who will attend those who really care about the issue. So, you know, it, it means we avoid handing leaflets on deaf ears or people indifferent about it. Say, I, I quite like the idea of a public consultation. And it's like just holding it as an event.
Anyone else?
I mean, the bottom line for us as a council is we, i- i- if, if in six months, a year or two years' time, some, somebody or some number of people in the village object to the proposal, we need to demonstrate that we've given them the chance to comment on it. And that's our defence essentially. So provided we've gone through the residents and said, what do you think of this? You know, if they all turn up with their pitchforks in two years' time, we can say, well, we did ask you, I mean, this was the leaflet we delivered, this was the meeting we held, and we asked you for your views, and this was the response we got. So that, that's our cover.
So Ian, do you, would you like to suggest the resolution perhaps? See where we're at?
I think the resolution is that we, is that, I mean, on, on, we're discounting the issue of funding because that's been dealt with. So I think the resolution would be that the council agrees to consult residents in the affected area about the proposals and welcomes the offer of voluntary assistance by the all councillors in distributing the consultation, something like that.
Did everybody sort of, yes, that, yeah? So Ian, would you be happy to propose that, please?
I could propose that, yeah.
And your seconding? I didn't know he was seconding or saying something. I didn't know he was doing that or saying something. So can we have a show of hands on that then? And the good thing about that is, let's say, that it's keeping it moving. Yes, we've not just let it go. Item number nine has been removed from the agenda, which allows us to go to item number 10, which is back to Morgan, please.
Indeed, I'm afraid more of me. The Venter Library partnership agreement, which we originally received when we discovered that we were no longer in an agreement with the Isle of Wight council, was discussed quite some time ago now. And it was, at that point, suggested that our contribution to the library would be in the region of £26,000, compared to the total running costs so far as we're able to ascertain of about £96,000, which shared between us and the Isle of Wight council. So it was agreed to renegotiate that agreement. And with the help of some members, we've managed to get ourselves down to a position of £20,000 going forward with a formal agreement to start from April 2026. It's worth noting, though we did ask for a sort of simplified agreement, the Isle of Wight council's legal department said that actually the majority of the, the body of that agreement was there to protect both parties, and they were unwilling to, to make it any simpler. But the, the background information's simpler and the schedule at the back, which details who's financially contributing to what and who's providing what, is quite simple for, for us to see.
Thank you, Morgan. I always want to say, I think it's a pity it's called a library because it, those of you that go like to Newport Library or even to this library will see that it's far more than a library now. It does a lot, lot more. And as you know, puts out a newsletter. And I know Catherine's got very good contacts there. And there are plans to even expand the things that are happening there now. So I think it could be very good value for money personally.
I'd, I'd add to that, of course, that what, what needs to go to this meeting is the approval of a financial contribution. But the partnership agreement actually is much broader than that in terms of giving us a bit more of a say into how the library itself is run and giving us an active pass and a voice in that through the, the partnership meetings that will then happen. And so it is, it's more than just the financial contribution. It's looking towards how the library itself is run.
Yes, so we can say that this is a very positive motion here. But at the moment, the main thing is to agree to the £20,000, which coming down from £26,000 is a bargain. Yes, so can someone pose that? Or a question, Steve? Thank you.
As you said, we're paying nearly £26,000 at the moment. Under the line that's on the budget, that is purely our contribution to the running libraries, not the cleaning's work.
No, indeed, the cleaning is separate because we, yeah, that's included in line number two, I believe, of that, that budget, the cleaning salaries.
Thank you, Steve. Any more questions? Would someone like to propose the £20,000 then, please? Carl? Thank you. And a seconder, please? Oh, Tom Watkins, please. A show of hands, please. Thank you. The next item is a bit of a formality introduced by Morgan. Thank you.
Indeed, the Isle of Wight council have sent us quite a short letter, which you'll see attached to this document, basically including the suggestion that they'll be proposing restrictions in all council-owned public spaces, so parks, greens, beaches. So they'll be wanting to prohibit the use of disposable barbecues, releasing of balloons and the use of skylantons. So they're, they're asking at this stage for a response from Venter Town Council as a partner. And it will be going to a wider consultation once we're through this phase.
It's rather strange, these three things. Ian, did you have something?
Yeah, I mean, it's sort of sad in a way, isn't it? Because one of the nice things about our park is that, you know, we have a very submissive approach to the park. So unlike a lot of London parks where you turn up at the entrance, there's a huge great board and list of all the things you can't do. You know, in our park, we're very relaxed. So I mean, we allow people to cycle through the park and we allow people to skateboard in the park. And we allow people, you know, dogs or fleas in the park and ball games and kite flying. And we don't have a long series of restrictions. And it, I, I would be sad to see the park, you know, with a load of do not do this, do not do that at the entrance. And, you know, we leave it open and light, which a lot of, a lot of councillors don't, don't do. And, and we allow the residents to sort out, you know, any issues between the different users themselves. That said, I mean, the barbecue thing is an issue. And we do get people using disposable barbecues in the upper park. And, and, you know, there are two, two problems, I suppose, it causes. One is that there is a fire risk and people do dump their coals on the grass. And we do get burnt patches now and again. And the other is people do have a habit of throwing their leftover food into the bushes, which are, you know, cooked chicken bones and stuff, which both encourages the rats that we've already got in the park and also is a danger for, for pet owners because dogs, dogs can choke on cooked, cooked chicken bones. Last time I was in Cornwall, I was quite impressed to see that there, they actually provide special bins, special fireproof bins for disposable, well, disposable barbecues. You know, on the basis that they know people are going to do it. And people like to sit on the beach in Cornwall on a summer evening and have a barbecue. And the, and the bin's right there. And, and that's their way of dealing with the problem. And, and that's, in some ways, is a better approach than this one. A, because it's nicer that we're actually allowing people to enjoy themselves, providing they're responsible. And, and B, because I, I, I mean, the catch with this is enforcement, isn't it? And we just know they're not going to have anyone wandering around the upper park looking for people with barbecues. So it's just, all we're going to end up with is a notice that people ignore. Balloons and skylantons, I've no idea what the issue is there. I mean, I think, I, I, skylantons, I do think there is a slight fire risk, isn't there? If they come down in someone's garden and the little candle's still going. And balloons, I don't know what the problem is there, but that's just, is that just a? Balloons, I don't know what the problem is there, but that's just, is that just a pollution issue? It's not going to be enforced, is it? So I'm quite sure why.
Well, if you look at the recommendation, it just says to agree a response to the Isle of Wight Council's letter. So we don't actually have to just say yes. John Watkins, you want to?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Basically, going back to what Tom said about the bins, fire bins, Fort Victoria, West White, Hertfordshire.
Do they?
Yes, and they have had them for some years. And they are used.
And that's Fort Victoria?
So that may be a consideration at some point, rather than outright banning barbecues, to consider providing facilities to enable people to have barbecues.
So how does everybody else feel? Because we do need to respond to the council with a yes, do it, or Carl?
Yeah, I agree. What John and Ian said is that nothing I hate more, you go to a public space, it's don't do this, don't do that, and there's signs everywhere. I think as a, we just support the community in how to use the park safely. And I'd rather see an option of providing a facility for barbecues or something like that than just, you know, put a ban on it. And as for releasing balloons, you can release them where you want. So, yeah.
I've not seen enforcement, I don't trust, facing after the balloon and the person who's just released it.
Yeah, you're right. But more than that, it's about how we want our community to use the park and feel free in our spaces and not, you know, stamp restrictions on them, so.
I think the barbecue's more of a problem on the beach, really. I think probably Ed would say that. Because in the evenings, later in the summer, there are quite a few barbecues on the beach.
If you invite a comment on that, just as a way, it's three separate things. It's not one sign I've gone and saying, no barbecues, balloons or skylantons. So if you wish to say, we quite like the idea of banning barbecues on the beach, for instance, but, you know, balloons and skylantons, do we like, you can reply.
We can respond like that.
It's been labelled very weirdly in the terms of three things grouped together.
Not really very linked, are they? No. Ernie, did you have something to say?
Yes. Are there any events that we run that would even require the use of releasing balloons or skylantons? It just, it feels oddly specific. I think there's a...
Can I just say that sometimes people do balloons for memorials, don't they? And they let, they let, yeah. But that's where you would, and sometimes they would release a lot of balloons.
As a big community.
As a tribute to some, tribute to someone that's passed or something, yes. So that's what I guess they're thinking of. That's my interpretation.
I mean, in terms of barbecues, I'm much more of a big fan of providing facilities on the beach for them. Say a fireproof bin or something like that. In terms of releasing balloons or skylantons, it feels like a little bit of extra piece of legislation, extra thing you've got to step around to do that if there's a good reason for it.
Okay.
Other than that, though, it just feels weird.
So James and Linda was just waiting, sorry.
Well, I was under the impression that the barbecues were going to be banned because we've got a meeting.
All the pound ones?
Yeah, because there's a meeting going on with Tesco's and Morrison's and for them head office to decide whether to ban them or not.
Oh, that's interesting.
Coming in from the government.
Well, maybe you'd like to feed us more information when you have it.
Yeah, when we have the meeting.
Yeah.
Because we didn't have many last year and they fizzled out. We had them at the beginning of the summer and then suddenly they stopped coming in and we didn't sell any.
Well, thank you for that information. Yeah, that's great.
Something's going on somewhere for that. And also lighter fuel, we're not selling anymore.
Oh, that's interesting too. Yeah. Safety somewhere is going on. Can I just, Steve, were you, I think Steve was trying to say something? It's balloons and animals. Okay, yeah.
I'd like to actually see us pulling up signs, don't release balloons. But if there is an event that's planned to release hundreds of balloons, I would prefer to be prepared for that.
I've never seen it locally. I've only ever seen it on the TV. I don't know about anybody else, if anyone's seen it locally.
I've heard of it.
Oh, yeah. So James was next and then you, Mark.
Yeah, she's going to say, let her come back to us. People ask these barbecue things like, there's a great cost for that.
Yeah.
Because you want two or three on the beach for you. Some of the park is going to be quite expensive.
On the beach, it's a bit dangerous, haven't it?
Of course it is, yeah. Yeah, we say it, we left our notes on it.
Okay. Yeah, so that could be an issue. Mark, you're doing.
We could draft something back, like saying that we actually, we agreed to restrictions of barbecues on the beaches, which I think all of us agree with that. And but Venter Park, we do not agree with restrictions in Venter Park as it restricts and it's too, you know, restrictive for people using the park. We just draft something in that respect and we're ruling out one area from another.
Okay, that's a talk. Ian, you're next.
I think my main issue is people are going to do it anyway, aren't they? So it's necessarily enforcement, which is, that's the logic of having the bin. At least if it's a fireproof bin, at least you remove the immediate danger. And in fact, last summer in the upper park, somebody built a fire up there. They dug a hole. And the hole's still there. The fires are gone. But it, so I mean, and that wouldn't be covered by this because it says disposable barbecues. And in fact, Carl's idea, I mean, I was in Finland in the summer. And I mean, they're crazy about barbecues on beaches and parks in Finland and you find, they do actually provide public places. You know, you get the metal thing where you put the fire and they provide that as an amenity. And, you know, okay, it's a high trust society. But I mean, several times I saw people at the beach using the public barbecue. And it's a shame, it's a shame we can't do stuff like that.
Yeah, that would be very nice if we could do that. I do think they're good. John Watkins?
I don't think there is an enormous cost to providing something like a fireproof barbecue. The ones I've seen generally are oil drummed, split rounds and put on a frame.
The cost of the empty?
Well, yeah, but there is a, I don't remember that, but I've done that.
This is a difficult one to know what response to send, isn't it? Sorry, I think James was first and then Carl. That's no problem.
We should use the screen about animals.
Yeah.
I think there are dogs going for it, weren't there?
Yeah, that we could get burnt feet, couldn't they?
Well, they're burnt feet. They had two balloons, weren't they?
Oh, two balloons. Oh, you're on balloons now, sorry. Okay, Carl.
Yeah, I think it's a danger going outside the issue here in terms of sticking to what, I mean, yeah, that would be a nice direction to go in, to provide those facilities. But in terms of this and what the council's asking us to do, yeah, I just think focus on that a little bit and what we're going to say.
My money on rejection, please.
I think we should, but obviously provide a reasoned response. So our justification for...
It's restrictive. It's slightly restrictive. If we, if local parish and town councils want to impose their local rules on things like we did with dogs on the beach, then that's up to us. It's not up to Ireland Council to impose something upon us.
That's fair enough. We all know that it's just too restrictive for the community.
Because it's a very, if you look over the whole island, it's a very big area that they're restricting it on, yes. So shall we have a proposal, something like the response would be to reject this suggestion?
We need to delegate authority to an officer to write the letter in consultation with somebody or suggest, with the gist being that we write expressing concern about the proposals.
Are you happy about that, Ian and Ali? Yes, yes. So is there anyone else on the council that would like to work with them? To, Carl, I thought you might, because you've been quite involved in this. Would that be acceptable?
Yeah.
And Carl, well, yes. So can we have a proposal for that, please? John Watkins and Ian seconding. And a show of hands, please. Thank you. I think that was a really useful. Oh, well, okay. Do you want to abstain then? Or do you want to abstain? Okay, thank you. Item number twelve, change of voice. Ali would like to present the next item, which is the local government reorganisation. And we would be looking for councillors that are interested in this and are knowledgeable and that will help with a decision.
Yeah, that's right. So, thank you, Chair. The government has now launched its public consultation on the future of local government across Hampshire and the southern area as part of national plans for local government reorganisation. The consultation runs until the eleventh of January. And details of how to take part can be found in the link that's provided on the report. And the recommendation to members is for, I created the recommendation of up to three councillors to formulate a response from the town council as a whole to this consultation, which needs to be submitted before the end date of the eleventh of January. But with that said, it could be, obviously it can be more than three councillors, so, you know. It really depends on who wants to be.
I have no problems getting it, sorry. Can't hear what you're saying. I haven't got my email.
Oh, it is Asper. Is it? Yes, it's Asper, it's written on that. Yes, yeah. So I know Ian's already written a couple of emails regarding this subject. So Ian, are you interested, please, in being one of the people that would work?
I'm happy to, yeah. I mean, I don't know whether any members have looked at the government's consultation. It is a rather strange, it's very hard to engage with it because it's, you know, A, it's all about the Manishire boundaries in Hampshire, which doesn't affect us hugely. And the way the consultation is structured, it asks very vague, high-level questions about each of the proposals. And if you want to go on there, you know, expressing something, some comments about the island, it's not immediately obvious how. You can't, essentially. You have to pick one of the options and put the comments in the blank box at the bottom. So for us, if we wanted just simply to say that we support the proposal for the island to have its own council, I'm not even sure we'd need a working group for it. If we want to start getting involved in the relative merits of the proposals in Hampshire, you know, I'm not quite sure why, as a town council, we think, I mean, members can do that individually and I've already made my own personal response. I'm not sure as a council really why we would get too exercised about.
I guess they're just ticking boxes, though, don't you not think?
Well, I mean, they started off wanting to throw up some options in Hampshire and then as ever, it's become embroiled in party politics. And I think beneath these four options are actually different political parties who've got their own preferences as to where the boundaries should sit. And I suspect the reasons that each of the political parties has backed their proposals are probably not in the criteria. They're probably political issues which we would want to stay away from.
So I suppose the question would be, how many feel the same as Ian that it's probably not any? John, what, yeah, and do you?
Just speak. I think we should, I think we should take a view of the town councils, a local authority issue that could affect us. And it is, it is just like a one-line response that, what should I, what should be, what should see. We have no views on the mainland configuration, but we agree that there part of it that says the IY should remain separate. And I think every voice that can be added to...
And John Watkins, are you saying you were endorsing that? Yes. I thought, I thought they got the gist of that, yeah.
On our stuff and they can sort their own.
Mark, you feeling the same? Yes. How about anybody else? Is everybody of a mind that that's the way?
Sounds a bit isolationist, but it's not really.
No, well, no, but we are, aren't we? Yes. So how do we want to proceed with that then? Because the proposal was to have a meeting of up to three councillors to decide this, but it almost seems to me as though the feeling is we're on the same page round the table. Is anybody not on the same page?
I just think I should probably abstain. I feel like I don't really understand this fully well. I've got the general gist, but in terms of actually being a decision maker, I would not be a good person for it.
Okay, well done, Ernie, for saying that. That's the same thing braiding it as well. Okay.
I think essentially we're delegating authority to the clerks to write a letter expressing support for the island retaining its own council, as in all of the four options. And that's it, isn't it? And it's a one-line letter, really, so.
So, yes, we don't want to make hard work of something that's quite simple. Is everybody, you guys down there, okay, yes? With, and so who is going to propose that? John Watkins and Mark seconding. And to abstain, show of hands for the rest. Sorry?
I don't agree.
Okay, so James is abstaining. The rest of us, can I see the show of hands, please? Thank you. Yeah, three abstentions.
I mean, what's interesting about the recent announcements, last week, was the suggestion that the county elections are going to go ahead. It's planned now, obviously for the island, that makes sense because we're hoping that we won't be affected. But in mainland, it's going to be a very strange situation where they're electing councillors essentially to abolish their own councils. Quite how that's going to work out and at what stage they're going to want elections for the new councillors. Because what you're going to want is representatives for the new areas to shape their council. Because it's a massive task, if you think about it, there's legal issues, property issues, staffing issues, you know, organisational issues, service delivery issues. Abolishing essentially four, well, abolishing a lot of councils, all the ones on this list, replacing it with either four or five, or three, I think three or four in the mainland, is going to be a horrendous job to do. And even just dealing with all the staffing issues and who works where and where the officers are going to be and...
And they delayed the mayors.
Well, the mayor, yes, the mayor elections are delayed, which is sort of odd, really, because it would have made more sense to have delayed the local elections again, but, you know, there we go.
There we go. Okay, so moving on from there. Quite an interesting eclectic mix of subjects this evening. Item number thirteen. I wonder if Ian, you would mind as being or?
I'm happy to. These were something we identified at the Polis PR Committee. Essentially, we've got two bits of standing orders where they're not up to date. One of the changes is simply referring to the Policy Resources Committee itself, which I'm looking for where that...
We're on number thirteen, terms of references.
We are. This is about the town clerk. So currently in Venter, everything to do with the town clerk, recruitment, dismissal, it's pay and rations, and terms and conditions comes to full council. And there've been a number of occasions, going back into the past, when we've had to have extraordinary council meetings to deal with issues relating to the clerk. The legal position is that that isn't necessary at all. And it is actually perfectly possible to have a committee dealing with everything to do with the town clerk. And if you look at most other councils, that is the way that they do things. But at PNR, we decided to go for a compromise option, which is what's proposed here. And the compromise is that recruitment and dismissal of the clerk would still come to full council. So if the, as and when we advertise and refill the job, it would be a full council decision so that all members have a chance to be involved. But for the day-to-day issues, you know, terms and conditions, pay and rations, that will be dealt with by the committee. So we're suggesting it as our house, because we remember that the full council's involvement in the clerk recruitment has been helpful in the past.
Yes, it was at one time, yes.
And therefore we wanted to hang on to that. But on the other hand, we don't see the point of having to call an extraordinary council meeting every time, you know, something arises about the class contract.
So this is just for everybody, the minor changes in the terms of references. Everybody happy with them? Seems fairly, we trust the PNR committee to decide the right outcome. So the recommendation is just to agree the proposed amendments, which are in yellow on your paperwork, yes? So can we have a proposal, please? Linda and the second is Ian, please. Show of hands, please.
I'm Mrs Stein, I'm just going to go as the first one to go.
Okay, thank you. Right, okay, number fourteen. Now, this is the standing orders. And then can we have someone from the PNR committee, don't mind who it is, to present this, please?
I'm happy to talk to this very briefly. Again, this was the one that I started to introduce a moment ago. So this is a couple of bits of standing orders, which doesn't reflect the current position with the council. The easy one is number one, which is simply that we refer to the Policy Resources Committee rather than the Staffing Committee, which is just an oversight, that we didn't pick up when we last reviewed them. Slightly more involved one is number two. And here, it's just simply that the current wording doesn't reflect the Isle of Wight Council's policy and process or the NALC recommended standing orders. So what we are suggesting... So, what we are suggesting is that the bottom half of section two, and essentially it's, essentially, A reflects the current process, essentially, which is that any complaints go to the Isle of Wight Council and are dealt with by that council. B is unchanged. C is unchanged. And D, D essentially says that if they do find that there has been a breach in the code of conduct, or then we report it to the council to deal with. And that, D is essentially the NALC, the NALC recommended standing order.
So, there's four, A, B, C and D there. Can we take them as one?
You can, yes, A and C are essentially the same as currently.
Okay, so, has everybody read the statement that Ian's just explained to us? And is everybody happy that the committee have? Does anybody else on the committee want to say anything? Steve Milford, you're on that committee, and John Watkins? You're happy, yeah, yeah. So, could someone propose it, please? Ian propose it, and Steve Milford second it, which seems very sensible. Can I have a show of hands, please? Okay, one abstain. Okay, so, moving on to number 15, Members' Code of Conduct. I heard from Alison today that the code of conduct was due to be reviewed December because it is a year since it was written. So, we need to see if we wish to have any changes in the code of conduct, in particularly the separate confidentiality statement, which I understand was a request from Steve Cooper that we all sign this evening, that last page. Okay, so, if I take mine off and pass it round while we're talking, if you don't mind, to sign against your name. But I don't know, has anyone seen anything there that they think might need modification? Or is everybody happy with it? It was written a year ago.
I think, Chair, on the actual code of conduct itself, my recollection is that we essentially took the standard NALC version, I don't believe we made any changes. May have been some very minor drafting changes just to reflect our structure, but essentially, this is written for us by NALC, and I think the stakes will be quite high for amendment, yeah. And the confidentiality statement is something that, as you say, the councillor Cooper proposed at the PNR Committee, and this follows on from a number of concerning breaches of confidentiality that's happened on this council, which we obviously can't discuss the details of at this meeting. Nevertheless, all members have a responsibility to maintain the confidentiality of information they come by, whether it be from the confidential sessions of committee or from dealing with, dealing with, dealing with staffing matters. And the goings-on within the council are not for gossiping around the town. And it has been unfortunate that we've had several instances recently where that has happened. And what, I'm sure councillor Cooper would be underlining the importance of members affected to decide where he had this meeting. His suggestion, which was agreed by the committee for recommendation to council, is that just to bring it home to everyone, that, you know, we have a responsibility to, you know, keep the internal goings-on of the council to ourselves, particularly if they concern our staff. He wanted everyone to sign the statement. And obviously, if there were further breaches, that would...
Hence, we're going to do that this evening.
If there were further breaches, it would obviously be, the fact that we've signed this would be something the council could submit to the monitoring officer as evidence that the member was aware of their obligations.
Thank you. I just have one question before, Ali has something to... The declaration that is within this, the fact that it's a year ago and what have you, and we did this when we first started, do we know if this has to be updated when there are changes? Or does it have to be updated annually or anything, the declaration of?
When you take office, you sign...
Yes, and do you have to update it every so often, or?
Only if the code changes.
Only if it changes, all right.
Which is another reason not to change it, without a good reason.
Yeah, that's fine.
The civility thing is ours, I don't, we said biannual, I don't know what, I've just noticed that on the back. So, presumably, at some point, we agree to do it every two years.
I think it's actually the other biannual, twice a year.
Is it twice a year?
I believe it's intended to be twice a year.
It's once biennial and once biannual, isn't it?
Yeah. We'll have to check with councillor Cooper on that, because he leads.
So, I think Ali has something you want to say.
Yeah, just to basically say that the confidentiality and access to information statement is actually in the Members' Code of Conduct, a version of. But this separate sheet where all councillors have signed up to this just reiterates and kind of drives home the importance of confidentiality from councillors. So, yeah, that's what this is. It's pretty much repeated in here, but it just, you know, reinforces confidentiality and, you know, just amongst councillors.
Okay, thank you. So, we do need someone to propose that, please? Linda, and a second, please? Oh, Steve Milford was first, I think. And show of hands? Thank you. And then we come to number 16, and Ali is going to introduce this one.
Yeah, very much like the Members' Code of Conduct, the Employees' Code of Conduct is reviewable at the same time, so, i.e. now. Clerk's included it on the agenda, just for review, to make sure that everything is still as is or is there any amendments. And that can go alongside the Members' Code of Conduct, which, as you know, is also reviewable.
So, that's pretty much a formality, I believe. I don't think anyone will want to question that, but if you do, please feel free. Other than that, can we have a proposer, please? Ernie?
Sorry, one of the arrangements for making staff aware of the contents, because whereas we're members, we've all been given a copy and we've signed for it. It's not clear how we would brief our staff on this.
Indeed, it forms, under the new contracts that were agreed quite recently, it's alluded to in the contract as a non-statutory or non-contractual part of employment. So, though it's not legally enforceable, it is something that employers are made aware of when they're joining or when contracts are renewed.
Are you happy with that response, yes? So, we had Ernie proposed it, can I have a second, Braden?
Thank you.
Thank you. Show of hands, please. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I know it's difficult, I can't agree, it's written for, because I want to deal with certain councillors.
It's not, it's employees.
This is employees?
Yes.
Well, no, Jim's actually right, there is important material in there about relationships between councillors and staff. And it is a requirement for both councillors and staff that we have professional relationships with our staff. We don't get dragged into overly familiar, I think is the right word, friendship-type relationships with our staff, because, you know, we're a small organisation and there should be a line between members and officers. My perception, looking back in this council, that that has been an issue for us in the past. So, there are some quite important provisions in there. But once again, those are not things that we've written, those are things that now have written nationally and recommended to us. And I think you'll find that the vast majority of councils have those provisions in their rules. Because quite simply, if you're too friendly with staff, then you have a conflict of interest and you're not able to participate in any decisions affecting that member of staff. You know, we are collectively, we are the staff's employer. And it's the same sort of relationship that you'd expect in a large company, where, you know, with managers and staff.
Thank you, Ian, for that. So, I've forgotten where we were now, can you tell me?
Yeah, I suppose it was Ernie and seconded by Braden.
And did we have, oh, yes, we have show of hands, because James was, yeah. Okay, thank you very much. So, number 17, Morgan, you've been quiet for a long time. If you'd like to introduce number 17, which I think is an excellent move for us.
Thank you, Chair, yes, I managed a few minutes' silence there. Just to note that as part of the full council meeting on the 13th of October, the council agreed to consult with members of the public about its budget for the coming financial year. The staff, including most notably Catherine Hammond, thank you very much, has done a significant amount of work in putting this consultation together. The view is that it should run for, sorry, for a month, preferably from the 10th of December to the 11th of January. Although that it's over Christmas, I'm sure there'll be people with a bit of time on their hands, potentially, to get involved with it. And, yeah, it will then be presented, or the results of it will be presented to first an informal budget meeting of the council with a view that it will inform the decisions made by the council approving the budget at its February meeting. So, the question is attached to the paper and subject to any amendments. It's suggested that it's approved and distributed.
Can I just say that I believe it's going to be distributed, A, online, of course, and then B, at centres where there are volumes of people, like Baby Box, Doctor's Surgery, Wellbeing Cafe, that type of place to try and attract people. And we do expect a very low return. We're not, we're going to be realistic. I think someone has some statistics about...
I was speaking to Rhyetown Council's responsible finance officer, and I think it was a couple of years ago when they ran their consultation, they had fewer than 10 responses.
And that's right. So, perhaps we could all feel one in ourselves, then we would at least have beaten Rhyde, won't we? Yes, so, apparently it is something that we should have been doing as well. So, we're bringing ourselves up to speed nicely. So, is everybody happy? Have you had a little scan of the questions asked? I think they're very, you know, they're not difficult, and it will give us an idea of what people want us to do.
The only concern is if we're asking people things that we then can't deliver. I mean, and one leaps out straight away is charging for public toilets. We had the whole debate about whether we wanted to charge for public toilets in the central car park, and the agreement from the councils that we would. And then it turned out, for various reasons we aren't going to, we didn't. And I'm not sure now, very cheaply, but that could be achieved. So, if everyone says yes to charge for public toilets, you know, what are we going to do about it?
I suppose if we give them an answer as to why we can't, then...
They're going to say, why is it charged?
Or going forward, how about that? That if we're going forward, we might go to make a change or something. I'm sure we can appease people, but I do think it's a good thing. So, the recommendation is to ask you to approve the consultation questionnaire with a view for it to be distributed quickly, two days over that. Yes, so can someone propose, please?
Your mind's just going to be a word.
And Ernie, seconding.
Similar.
Can I have a show of hands, please? Oh, you want to say something? I thought you were seconding.
I mean, I've got a bit of experience going on delivering. If you want an annoying door-to-door salesman, but shortened version of a married, go and knock on doors. I've got a quick minute, literally just like handful of questions, and then if you've got anything extra to say, just in case, if that's needed.
I think the only problem with that, Ernie, would be that if we did it in a particular road and we didn't do it in the next road, we might get a neighbour say, I had a very nice young man come and talk to me, and the other lady might say, no, I didn't. So, that would be the only thing, because I don't think we could cover all the houses there are in Venter. It's a very kind offer, and it's very much appreciated, and we know you're good at that. So, we will bear that in mind for the future. Okay, so... Oh, yes, it was Mark and Ernie, were you seconding it, or?
I mean, I can second it, so I love it, yeah.
Yes, yes, you see, he loves the idea, so I think that's good, yes. Okay, show of hands, please, for the questionnaire. Okay, that's lovely. And then item number 18 is just the date of the next meeting. And that is the 9th of February, which is quite scary, so, thank you. Yes, so, that's correct. Okay, well, we'll have to talk about that now, because the meeting is finished. So, the meeting is closed up.
See, today, I'm saying on earlier, the Members' Code of Conduct, the views biannual. We're all getting confused by annual and biennial.
Yes.
But biannual does mean every six months.
Right, so Morgan and Ian did have that conversation, so it is every six months.